Six o'clock, we call the meeting to order. Roll call. Jason. Valerie Pukop. Cheryl Taylor West.
Yeah.
Vicki Wilson.
Here.
Sam Pierce.
Here.
Let the record reflect we have a forum.
Anybody here that would like to say a prayer? Please.
I'll pray for us.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, thank you for this opportunity to gather here tonight. What we ask is you to guide and direct members of council and mayor to make the best decision possible for our community. What we ask for is guidance, direction, or cover us, be with us throughout this holiday as we go to celebration work. In Jesus' name, a prayer, amen.
The flag of the United States of America and see the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor and justice side, our political allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, one and indivisible.
One item five. Six oh one, public comments and receipt of petitions that this time anyone will be allowed to speak on any matter other than personnel matters. Any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere on agenda or matters other than litigation for whom it's time not to exceed four minutes. No counsel, board discussion, or action may take place on a matter until such matter is in place on an agenda and posted in accordance with the law, Texas Government Code, Section five five one point oh four two. Any deal?
Hi, guys. I am pretty short and sweet tonight. I'm just hoping that we can get the city to share a little bit more about the election that's coming up. And this is something that I have done pretty much every May in various places across Texas because May elections are just so, such low turnout. I know that there's a word about the city having sample ballots available for pickup and viewing, but it would be really great if y'all could just start sharing about the election each day, just to go vote. So that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you. Teresa Wyatt.
Hi, my name is Teresa Wyatt, and I am a ten-year citizen of Whitney and a business owner. I am here to speak to you about a very concerning situation regarding community relations between the city of Whitney and its citizens. I would like to bring to your attention that the mayor, Janice Sanders, with her tribe, her words, including her daughter and son-in-law, Jacey and Kevin, have publicly through social media have pronounced that Gabriel Chavez is a fake account and that Ken Scales is the man behind the account. This is not true. What they are accusing him of doing is what in fact they are doing to him. I believe that is what you call a hypocrite. This is not the first time that they have made up false narrative about my husband and my family. Due to their harassment and slander, they have caused damage to my family and our businesses. I know the proof is in the pudding, so let me give you some examples. Here's a few of many. On Janice Sanders' mayor page, it says, from Janice Sanders posting, Gabriel Chavez slash Ken Scales, it is Aaron Torres with Hill County. Robin Ponwe Silva, which is a relative, says Gabriel Chavez, oh, come on, Ken, you know who, how this works. Kevin, which is her son-in-law, says Gabriel Chavez said is false, and in personal opinion, may want to watch what gets said, especially when it's a lie. Ken, you are just but hurt still. Then he goes on to say, get a life, dude. I say whatever I want to say. I'm not controlled by any relatives like you are, Ken. This is on Janice Sanders' personal Facebook page. F Y I. It tickles the blank out of me that I annoyed Gabriel Chavez, AKA Ken Scales. One lady asked, is he still around? Janice responds, yes, I'm his target, only now he calls himself Gabriel Chavez, lol. Kevin, which is her son-in-law, looks like we have a group of people round out of Waukesha Hatchie and came to Whitney to cause problems. We were never run out of Waukesha Hatchie. We chose to come to this town. It's our home. We've been here for 10 years. And we have contributed to this city. Jacey, her daughter, says, Gabriel Chavez, I haven't slandered anyone, Ken Scales, but you sure have. Then somebody I don't even know named John Morrow uses a lot of cuss words and is very threatening. Hill County hates you because you're nothing but a piece of blank and a troll who likes to stir up crap with no evidence or proof. Excuse me, I'd like my time to be added to that because I think that was ridiculous.
You're three thirty-five minutes.
Thank you. I can go on and on, and if anybody wants to see the proof, I've got it printed out here. It's not acceptable for this kind of behavior to happen. There are several threats in here. I mean, personal, viable threats. I'd also like to address the actions of Janice Sanders at the city council meeting in January because once the meeting was adjourned, my mother made her way up to say something to Jason then, and Janice began yelling and banging. If anybody else would like to hear the rest of my story, I'm available.
Where's the burner?
Anyway, I'm not helping the city Whitney out. And I want to let y'all know about that big bird yesterday. We have, and I didn't go on it. And about it.
Carol Eubank?
Hi, I'm Carol Eubank, and first off, I want to say I'm not here for anything political because I don't even right up front have the right to vote. And I do pay taxes to the city, and I love my city, so I felt like I could at least have a right to speak up. I grew up here, graduated from Whitney High School. I got married to my high school sweetheart, youth away while he was in optometrist school, and we made a decision to come back and serve our community through our business. The reason I'm here is to first say thank you. Thank you to each of you that are sitting there. I'm already going off the hook, so I don't know why, but anyway, thank you to each of you that are sitting there. You give your time. And most of y'all have jobs outside of this, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you to the public service workers for all you do. It doesn't go unnoticed. I also want to thank past mayors and past city council members for their time and for and for all that they've done. Let me straighten down. Once again, I'm grateful to each of you. I want to say thank you for all you've done. It has not gone unnoticed, which brings up my second point. In recent weeks and months, we've had several people that have chosen to take the path to be a source of disruption, fear, and anger, and they've used every possible forum to do so. What this is doing is destroying our community pride. If we stay divided, we cannot accomplish anything. We cannot let this happen, no matter the situation. We should never be okay with people bashing our city. It's our home, and it doesn't matter if you've lived here one month or 50 years. We should all be working together and supporting our city leaders that volunteer their time to make a difference. I love this town. I love our past. I love it currently, and I love the future we can have. We have some great people, and if we unite and work together and stop trying to tear down and destroy each other, we can make our hometown even better. All I'm saying is, this is our home, let's show respect to each other and work hard.
Greetings, Madam Mayor, Council. Way of introduction, for those that don't know me, I am Jason Smith, Youth Pastor at Whitney Fellowship Church and Whitney ISD's School Board Vice President. I speak to you tonight in both capacities, but more focused on the latter. I would like to take this opportunity to give this specific group of leadership my genuine appreciation. Having served on the school board now for over eight years, I see the stark juxtaposition between the previous city leadership group and contrasted with the current. In my personal experience, many previous attempts at collaboration between the city and schools under the previous city leadership were delayed, ignored, or even opposed. In stark contrast, this council and mayor, the efforts and collaboration were just in lockstep, as they should be for a thriving community that supports its future, our children. Thus, I have a deep appreciation for this specific group's cooperative and efficiency in collaboration with the ISD. Additionally, Mayor Sanders and members of the council, such as Councilman Ence and Pierce, have all spoke with me frequently about school and youth group issues and opportunities. Further, I would like to specifically recognize Mr. Privel and the mayor and council's decision-making and support of him. He and I spoke many months ago about County Road 1240, its improvement and renaming. Because of the compilation of all of your work, that project is nearing fruition. And believe me, I wholly recognize that even getting to this point is no small task with so many government entities involved. Lastly, I recognize the unfortunate obvious that many people seek office with self-serving and even corrosive agendas that would at best slow this group of collaboration and at worst sever it again. So again, I thank you, this current leadership group, for having the betterment of our community as your sole agenda. Thank you and God bless.
The present agenda, all matters listed, the city will be keeping and looking at the question. To the council member, the senator, if I have a discretion of any, I will be creating a agenda and it will be separately. Bottom six, act on approving the regular city council meeting minutes for the regular meeting on March twenty of twenty twenty-five and for the special meeting on April third twenty twenty-five. Bottom seven, act on approving the city of Whitney's entry report and recognition for March week. We have a roll call today.
Need a motion firstly?
I make a motion that we approve the regular city council minutes on the March ten and the special meeting on April third and the February. Jason Smith?
Yes.
Valerie Pukop?
Yes.
Carol Taylor West?
Yeah.
Vicki Wilson?
Yes.
Ed Pierce?
Yes.
Department reports. I'm going to give an update on the installation of the monument, the Gateway South on Highway twenty-two. The city council approved a welcome of Whitney sign back in twenty thirteen, and they submitted their site plan, the survey, and, I'll be careful up there, and was submitted to the Texas Department of Transportation. Somehow along the line of, over since twenty thirteen, the employee changes and what have you within the Texas Department of Transportation process of that welcome of Whitney sign, it kind of got brought to the point where when they changed employees. I came on to the chamber in twenty nineteen and kind of picked it back up and kind of got momentum going again. And the new guy that was filling in at Texas Department of Transportation had told me that we needed to mark, it's going to go up here on at the wire on twenty-two, and they told us that we needed to measure fifteen feet and then eight feet back, and then we could put the sign, the monument there. However, that was not the case. They then came back and said that we needed to have an agreement with the property owner and have that property on, have that property surveyed, which we did. And you'll see out there where the states are, that when we had it surveyed, there are states with pink flags. So anything toward the gas station belongs to Tiger Mark, and anything else in front of that is Texas Department of Transportation property. So when we did the survey, the sign walked in on the slab that's already there for the at the gas station. So we have to submit a site plan again with the pictures and everything that we were going to do. So we have had to start all over again on that monument because I have an unfinished mind. So even though this project is taking forever to get done, the chamber is still working diligently to get it done. So now that we've got somebody new and we'll be pretty soon with them, hopefully that project will come to life. We do have everything donated, the bricks and mortar, electricity, the water, the, everything is donated, so it's not costing anybody anything but a little bit of our time. So y'all just keep that in your thoughts that we're going to get that monument done pretty quick. So we're going to move on down to the next question.
Well, council, April first brings us halfway through our fiscal year, and I'm going to give you a six-month update on where we stand financially. So what we do is we try to see where we're at with our revenues and our expenses, and we, you know, you kind of think that you could get fifty percent right now, fifty percent revenues and fifty percent expenditures, but that's just the target area. You kind of, you have to look at what your large expenditures are in the first of the year because you may spend everything in the first, or you may have something that hits later in the year. Because of that, I asked all my department heads to, excuse me, give me a quarterly variance. So when my variances are you ten percent over or ten percent under? So for instance, if you're halfway through the year, and if you're at forty percent of your line item, you're supposed to tell me why. Or if you're at sixty percent of a line item, give me a reason why. This has helped us be able to establish our budget a whole lot better because we know what hits early, what hits late, and what hits in the middle. I guess it ends, stuff's going to be speakers there. We're already working on the budget, so one of the things that I wanted to make sure you were aware of and the citizens were aware of is where we stand financially right now. So as far as our revenue, we estimated through our budget process, when we worked through our budget workshops, we estimated that our general fund revenue would be two million six hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. So far to date, we have collected one million eight hundred and eighty-three thousand three hundred and three dollars and thirty-two cents. That's just under seventy-two percent of our projected revenue through the general fund. Now, again, that's the target, right? Fifty percent's your target because we've already collected eighty-eight percent of property taxes. So we're nearing a hundred percent on that, but we're tracking good. Our projection for sales tax is right on the money. We're at fifty-three percent collected, and we should be at fifty percent on that. That's something that comes in, you know, it doesn't come all at one time. Everything else is a little on track. Our franchise fees are actually doing better than we projected, so we're doing pretty good on our revenue. And that's for the general fund. I'm going to separate water because it's a different account and it's a different funding source. So as far as expenditures go, for the general fund right now, we are sitting at, I thought I had it marked, fifty-seven percent. So we're still within our ten percent variance. So we're doing pretty good as far as our expenditures. We did have a large expenditure when we converted over to Edmunds earlier in the year, that ERP, so that was something that we did not budget for, that will account for later if we have to move budget with it. But what we're hoping is that we don't have to do that. Now let's get on to the water account. Our water account revenues, we estimated that we would come in at, for a year, at one million four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Currently, we have collected seven hundred ninety-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents, or fifty-five percent. We are five percent over on our collection, which is, which is good. As far as expenditures go in the water sewer side, we are sitting currently at fifty percent on the number. So we are right on track to make budget with our water. So that's your six-month report, and if you have any questions or comments or whatever, I'd be happy to talk to you about it outside of department reports. Thank you.
This is my, Department of Emergency Services.
Hi, I am. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. All right, so for March twenty twenty-five, our EMS reported as callers, we ran forty-seven calls, forty-three calls from the city, four calls from the county, from mutual aid prepared flight. The average response sent in the city was five minutes and eleven minutes out of the county. Fire report, ran eighty-eight calls, seven fire calls were in the city, seventeen fire calls were in the county, thirty-five first responder calls were in the city, twenty-nine first responder calls were in the county, and we completed eight safety surveys.
Any questions? Thank you. Police Department and Coast Guard.
Madam Mayor, Council, March three, busy for us. We acquired the increase in calls. Total incidents at four hundred and twelve, the substance of alarms, warrant arrests. We've been made total six arrests because March was our first month of the year, actually before SAV home patrol, we had a hundred and sixty-two percent increase in traffic stops, so we ended up at two hundred and ten. Total citations of warrants ended up being two hundred and sixty-three, which was almost a two-hundred percent increase from the month of February. We had a few calls, ended up being at the Whitney Middle School, of what was going on at that time, but ended up being a different assault that occurred, which ended up in two juvenile defendants. One was for two thousand accounts of assault on public servant and other significant acts of assault on individuals. We also responded to servants over here in the Wayne Circle area with an eight-year-old four twenty-one, so they were sent to the precinct to a trial. I'm currently working on obtaining four digits to see for the new home patrol shelter, currently DMO, some of the cattle to vaccine, to immunity and court work costs. Other than that, have I covered enough?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of words.
For March, we had four water meets. We'd say our prepared from our T C Q noted was completed, so I've got them happy with us. Our grasshopper mower, we actually got back at the main, so we're up there. Three mowers now. Still short, one staff member, we're cleaning out the oil with water holes, fixing up the oil with sewer holes, and one of my guys recently completed the airport. You have to call him?
Thank you.
Library report. Say, Kristy Rogers is about, I thought her notes was to read. Library statistics and tax support overview, March twenty. In March, our library continued, served as a vital resource to the community with over one thousand three hundred and sixty-eight visitors, an increase of thirty-three percent over February. Digital checkouts continue to increase, reflecting ongoing interest in our free input and audio breaks. During Whitney's spring break, we provided seven individual programs catering to all agents. As tax season ramped up, we enhanced our accessibility to ensure patrons had the information and tools needed for their March and April tax responsibilities. We provided industry paper, fitted tax forms, assisted with getting patrons computer and computer access as resources for both filing their taxes and uploading your records. As we finish out April, we will continue to provide support for those preparing to file their twenty twenty-four federal taxes or extensions requests, as well as their city homeowner's extension documents due by April thirtieth. We are also providing a meeting room for our community sponsored tax workshop. Our library remains committed to connecting people with the resources they need when they need them most. And I'm also doing the report report. In March, the municipal court, council report, it shows that we had a seventy-three violations, and we collected four thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven and thirty cents. And that's it. Regular agenda. On item eight, liberate and act on selecting dates for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget for shots. We are looking at, are these the dates we're looking at?
Those are last year's dates.
Okay, so they're pretty close. So last year, our dates were August thirteenth and August twenty-seventh, and we like to propose August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and August twenty-sixth, we from the cloud.
Counsel, as I said earlier, the mayor and I have already been working on the budget. We started in March, just like we did last year. We've already had our first initial meeting with the department heads. We want to go ahead and get these on the calendar so we know how to plan our budget calendar out. This is a little earlier than we typically do that, but mayor and I have been diligent about making sure we're ahead of the budget schedule. So these are the same type of timeframe we did it last year. We did it eight to twelve, I believe. We did it twice at City Hall so we could all gather around the table on the big screen and see what happens. This isn't to set the times necessarily, this is to set the dates.
Just want to come in and clear my calendar for about the last two days, just in that means that we have to pick up.
And that's what we wanted to do is get it out early, so that way we weren't rushing you, so you could plan these things, get them on your calendar so we can have full participation.
We have a motion to accept those things?
I make a motion to accept the, both from six for.
Cheryl Taylor West?
Yes.
Sam Pierce?
Yes.
Valerie Pukop? Vicki Wilson?
Yes.
Jason West?
Yes.
One item nine, liberate and act on conducting a citizen engagement survey for the twenty twenty-five.
2026 budget. Yes, that's the survey, yes. So we have the example here, y'all, we have pretty much the same on this one last year.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So again, we're working on the budget. We want to get this out early into everyone. We did this last year. We had 13 people respond. I'm really hoping we have more people respond this year. This will be going out in April's water bill. We're going to be making a post in the newspaper. We're also going to be putting it on our website. This will run May 1 through June 1. You have to have a property ID inside city limits or an active water account. That's how it's going to be filtered to determine the property for the respondents. So again, we're asking the council to allow us to do that. We did it last year and again, we're hoping we have more, more turnout.
Cheryl Taylor West? Yes. Sam Pierce?
Yes.
Jason Eats?
Yes.
Vicki Wilson? Yes. And Valerie DeCoppa? Yes. On item 10, deliberate and act on six month trial, length trial of the permitting process discussed on March 20th, 2025.
Counsel, this is what we discussed at the last meeting and we asked if you had any questions about how it looked or what we wanted to do. What we're asking you to allow us to do is do a six month trial, see if it works. If it doesn't work, we can make adjustments as needed. But we need the opportunity to try it and make adjustments if needed.
Cheryl Taylor West? Yes. Sam Pierce?
Yes.
Jason Eats?
Yes.
Vicki Wilson? Yes. Valerie DeCoppa? Yes. Okay, executive session. If during the course of the meeting covered by this notice, the City Council should determine that a closed or executive meeting or session of the City Council or consultation with the attorney for, for the city should be held or is required in such closed or executive meeting or session or consultation with an attorney as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551, 001, etc., will be held at the City Council at the day, hour, and place given in this notice that the City Council may conveniently meet in such closed executive meeting or session or consult with the attorney of the city concerning any and all subjects and for any and all purposes permitted by the Act, including but not limited to the following sections and purposes. Texas Government Code 551.071 and Texas Government Code 551.074 will be held to take a session at 6:33.
Y'all have to leave, we'll move back there. Y'all can stay in here.
No.
Why is yours?
Oh, well. I'm sorry. Or like something that probably, every night, I'm like, the first couple nights, I'm scared. You can hear all the little frogs, you know, little frog noises. I've seen it hurt. I don't know how it talks. It's never last three, I don't know. Turtle, yes. Not the person that gets out of the middle, gets out of the middle. No. No, I usually take them to just get them out of the road. Because they usually know where they're, they have an idea where they're going. They know where the water is. Oh, my gosh.
The guy was brilliant, man. He was a doctor. Got a turtle and he said, well, I'm going to take it home and I'll put it by the fish pond. We hadn't seen it on the fish pond. Two days later, we didn't have a single fish, so we had a well.
So y'all, it's your phone on the 25th. Both of y'all will get your phone there. So y'all are going to know, you'll be on the city line system, so you'll have a phone. And then you'll have an extension. It's good.
Jonathan was listening to the voice cast on the phone. She was pretty upset because she was talking to somebody that I don't know who, and was that kind of, I don't know. It was automatic, it was automatic cell phone. So I tried to cut her back, but her voice mail wasn't set up. To kind of tell her, well, this is the medic cell, but there was no voice mail was set up. Robert?
Robert?
I mean, we're just here every day. I know point being getting up and going like often at home and getting ready. I'd like to be part of it, it's something I can do when I have the technology.
Come out of executive session at 6:43.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Jason Eats?
Yes.
Valerie DeCoppa? Yes. Vicki Wilson? Yes. Cheryl Taylor West? Yes. Sam Pierce?